All right, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is five o'clock. We're going to ask the clerk to announce the meeting and to call the roll.
A special session is being held on Thursday, October 2nd, 2014, at 5:00 PM in the fifth floor conference room for a presentation regarding selection of a strategic planning consultant, followed by the county administrator's first quarterly report. Roque, Walker.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
McKeonan.
Here.
Mugia. Maddox. Kane.
Here.
Markley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Philbrook.
Here.
Holland.
Here. All right, thank you very much. We're going to start off, I believe Mr. Connor is going to update us on the process for selecting our strategic planning consultant.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioners. So, we went through an RFP process. We solicited bids for about 30 days. We received two responses. We had more interest in the proposal, but a couple of them didn't meet the minimums and didn't get stuff to us in time, so we went with these two for evaluation. We followed the regular committee process, except this time the committee was Commissioners. That was Commissioners Markley, Philbrook, and Walker. The two prices that we received, one was from Management Partners Incorporated for $16,600 for the one day session. The other one was from Novak Consulting for $4,900 for the one day session. So I'll let the committee take it from there, and they can talk about their recommendations and how they voted, and getting this person hired. Richard Markley.
The lesser bid for $4,900 was from the firm to which Patty Gentrop has moved. So, not only were they the lower bid, they're also, she'll be working with us again, she's familiar with us. The higher bid, as Joe pointed out, there were travel costs, and obviously just the cost of getting to know us that were included in that cost, but it was such a, so much higher bid than the bid from Novak and really from Patty that we're familiar with, that I think the committee felt like it was a pretty easy choice for us to go with the firm that Patty has moved with, stick with someone who's familiar with us and with whom we're familiar, and who's also familiar with our strategic plan, and also spend a smaller budget amount on that decision.
Yes, that's 100% correct, madam. And the other thing was, is that we just didn't feel like we wanted to pay an extra $10,000 for them to get to know us. And the other lady had done a very good job, so we're very pleased with her. And I'm sorry that there were not more bids that came into us that we could look at, but I think we still have a good choice and looking forward to doing it. Al, anything you want to say?
No, you've covered it.
All right. It does not take action by this team. I think that committee was asked to make that decision.
Yeah, they haven't. We're just looking for any concerns from the rest of the Commissioners before we move forward with the contract.
I don't think we need a motion.
I don't think we need a motion. If there's, unless there's questions or concerns about going with Patty Gentrop again, I have had a good experience working with her in the last several years as she's worked on our strategic planning.
Our committee recommends that we hand.
So if there's no disagreement in that, I think we can move forward with that decision. All right?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks to the committee for working on that and for bringing us a recommendation. Mr. Connor, now we have the highlight of the evening, the moment we've all been waiting for, is Doug Bach County Administrator's Quarterly Report. Mr. Bach, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. In going through and formatting for tonight's report, it was really one of, you know, this is the first one. I chose a format of really working with the goals that have been set out by the Commission. Some of them are items that I would say I can sit down and respond to on a point-by-point basis about different items that we are working on. Others are more general and characteristic about, you know, operations of the government or how I conduct myself. So I've tried to put together a format that, you know, it adjusts a little bit as we go through it, and I'm going to move around actually, and I think, well, I guess I'll start from here, and present I may move around at the front. This is a fairly long report, because you all set a lot of goals for me. This was submitted to you electronically, oh, about 30 minutes ago probably, so you have it, but also you have hard copies, so that's in front of you if you want to make notes and such like that. The intent of this is that I will go through, and I will present tonight, and then, of course, you're, puts it back in your chair in two weeks when you do the evaluation, I guess, if there's questions and such. And we can talk about questions after, but I think the format for this probably work as well for me to move through the whole quarterly report, and then we can do some Q and A probably after that point if you choose to do so, but probably more of that looks to be in two weeks. Edwin will like it better if I stay over here, I think, as far as filming this. Section one, that's the direct commission goals that were set out for me. These are goals to which I have direct and substantial influence as we go through, so this header will be there at the top for this section one as we move through this area. As I noted, this is really an area that I believe I have, that I have more point-by-point or several points within ones to which we are working on as an organization. And noting, this is the first quarterly report, I believe the intent is that some of them there noted out for completion. We're looking at things that I'll accomplish over the course of the next year, coming into October of next year. First one is in public safety. The goal is maintain the overall quality of service delivery. In this area, we established new gun, the new gun laws were put in place. We had implementation and training. This was quite an overall operation within our organization, not just what we put forth for the Commission to see and act on, but really within the organization for training. Sheriff recruit graduation on July 10th, and then we began a new recruit class for his next group of available applicants. Fire recruit graduation was held on September 4th of this year. We're putting in place a fire medical assistance program. This is really for those people that are the reoccurring users of our fire, our ambulance service. There are a number of people, when we go through and study this and get into it, we find that it's just their habits and such are ones where they're always being the ones that call our ambulance. So through this program and the fire department, we're finding ways for them to contact, conduct us, contact us in other ways, so we don't have to send out a fire medical crew to them, and cutting down on a high number of our users from that perspective. We put the new boat ramp in place off the Kansas River. This required a little bit of legislative change as well, but it's there for emergency responses for water emergencies. Conditional offer of employments were issued for our upcoming police recruit class. The examinations for those are going in place now. That's anticipated, we're working toward 14, if all of those individuals can make it through the COEs. We started the implementation of our crisis intervention training in the police department and the fire department, and continued this in the sheriff's department. This is a good way for us to continue to lower the number of people that we have to arrest or take to jail and find other ways to assist those individuals. And we revised our police pursuit policy to enhance the safety for the public. Second area under public safety was sustainable budget to maintain overall service delivery. The initial steps taken in this area were the reduction, targeted toward reduction of overtime. This is, so far this year, we've seen a reduction of 29% for police, fire, and sheriff department. We continue to monitor this and hope to stay on this throughout the course of the year. Additionally, we've lowered trending out-of-class pay is down by 25% this year from what it was last year. We're also, as I noted, we review this on a bi-weekly basis from administrative standpoint. Each of these departments, obviously it's a day-to-day basis, as they go through it and evaluate it and review it as to how they make their calls for service and what they're doing. The big thing that really comes to sustainability in this area is, part of this is at least the completeness of the studies that were set out for both the police, for all the police, fire, and sheriff. This is noted as a one-year goal, and you'll note the timeframes that I put up here. We've issued the notice of need for the fire department service study. Those responses are in now. We have a fire, or a management labor agreement, and that's part of our labor agreement, that we will work with the fire union in how we go through and select the consultant for those. We're in that, moving into the review process now. And then we'll set out the timeline from this. That'll take us probably, I'm hoping 30 days, but could be 30 to 60 days before we get through the selection process for this, and then we'll move into the timeframe for the consultant to get to work. We'll issue the notice of need for the jail study in the first quarter of 2015. That's a little more of a standard type of a study that comes out, that we've done these in the past, so it's a little, I don't want to say easier, but it's a little more of a normal type of study to put in place. The police study is one that I'm looking really be for more of the second half of 2015. I know this goal was set out that I was to be complete into next fall, but I believe with the new chief of police coming on, we're going to have different ideas, concepts, innovations that the chief will bring to us, that I want to work with to implement, move forward as we move into our budget process, and then get their full input as we move forward with how we will do the, how we do this study. Department of Justice, the initiative we're working on with the Department of Justice for the recruitment efforts in our community, this is really one where we've provided staff a support. Mayor's office is doing a lot of work on this, but we've assigned staff to go through and do a lot of background and research information, provide this information for the community task force, and assist and present information to working committees.
Have you involved the Human Relations Commission in this?
No, I don't believe we've involved them directly. I think there might be a member appointed, a member appointed to the committee.
Yeah, and then I've got a. My question is, why necessarily just the mayor's office? Why not the staff being involved with the process?
Pardon, what's the question?
Why not the staff being involved with the process? Because I sent an email, you know, asking for questions two weeks ago in regards to the task force, and it still hasn't been answered. So I couldn't ask staff, because I guess staff is not involved with it.
Who did you send the email to?
I sent the email to you and through my, and it came by way of the secretary.
In terms of questions about the DOJ process?
Yes, yes, sir. I wanted to know, because when it comes to appointing someone, they needed to know the time of day, what day possibly they would be meeting on before they could make a commitment. So I sent a question out, and I didn't get a response, and that was probably two weeks ago, right after that meeting.
Oh, well, I thought we had, I thought we had the appointment, appointments done, but I will certainly double check on that. I apologize for any inconvenience on that.
Okay. And that's why I was just asking, why wasn't the staff involved with it, so I could at least?
Well, we track the appointments. I mean, we do have a number of staff. Gordon Criswell's going to be the lead out of the administrator's office on that, and so once we get this moving, I think the first meeting's going to be early November. It's taking a little longer to get all the appointments in place, but we're working, we're moving that forward. So we'll keep you posted. There's, as soon as we have that first piece is identified, we'll be keeping you fully informed of how we're moving this forward.
All right, as we move into the area of infrastructure, this is service delivery. So what can we do to maintain overall quality of service delivery? We've done some neighborhood group meetings and hearings to ensure input and maintenance. These are ones that are out there as part of some things that are done with livable neighborhoods, but getting input from those groups. We've assigned an engineer of the month within the engineering department. This is a good concept come up by, with our county engineer, and Bob Roddy, as he was still here, and Mike Tobin. As far as appointing an engineer now that, previously they're always assigned by projects, but then issues come up all the time that somebody needs to deal with and work on. So we program this, where one engineer will be on call for the different things that come in through the course of the month. It gives somebody that, it's their responsibility. It's not one that it comes in and now it's somebody else's project. There may be somebody else that's working on it, but that engineer of the month takes responsibility to make sure whoever is on that project, that there'll be a response given back to people, or that we address that and put it in the pipeline to move forward. Our mowing program saw some additional funding in the 2015 budget, so we'll look to see the results, and I think to add to that as we move into the next summer, and.
Is that, is that like, like we used to do, I'm sorry, is that like we used to do, and that is to bring on additional folks in the summertime, like kids and whatever, old enough to do the job?
Yes.
Like college students?
That's the target for it. It'll be, we have to, there's a little bit of equipment that was allocated for it, but it is to pay for part-time summer help.
Thank you.
And then we have a dedicated email on our website for snow complaints to come in. We receive those calls to come into 311. They also come in to Commissioners about certain areas that may have been missed, or somebody's still waiting to see what's coming on to their area. This allows us to take this email site, we can track it, and then follow through with it, our dispatch, as we can fit it into our routines, as our schedules as we're moving through the city.
You, sorry, you said it comes into Commissioners?
No, I said that sometimes Commissioners get calls, and they give them to us. This provides another source where you can ask as constituent, if they call you, you can say, you can send an email. So they may call you, and you'll want to take care of it then, but for future times, they would know they could go to our website and click on and do an email for easy access into submitting that.
Okay.
Second area under infrastructure, when it's regard to our capital maintenance improvement program, and this really is to talk about projects. So in 2014, the infrastructure projects have been completed. We're utilizing the standing committee process to discuss projects that are coming on for 2015, and then that are in the five-year plan, and that'll be on your, the next Public Works Committee plan to go through, and they'll be analyzing some of those that are out there in future years. This allows us to put more time on those rather than just do what comes into the, through the budget process, where we really spend most of our time just focusing on what's coming up in the next year, and doing this in advance of the strategic planning to come back and talk about allocation of resources.
Commissioner McKeonan, microphone please. Thank you. So on, you are on CMIP, not CNIP, correct?
Correct, but I'm ready to go to CNIP.
Okay, I just wanted to know on CNIP, when we did that, the first round of projects in '13, I was curious if any of the Commissioners had issues with that or problems with that CNIP process?
You know, I, there were issues, I think, that came about. I mean, we had a working, I mean, it's the first time we'd done it, so I think from the growing pains of the initial times of getting into it to lay out what the projects were, and they varied, so it was, you know, you have all the way from the curb and side rock programs to the major infrastructure programs that we did from the school or the fields project. So we had a lot of variation between what was going on. So I would say, yeah, there was issues, because we just had to work through all that.
Sure.
But I believe in the end, and I'm hoping we've been able to accomplish what the Commissioners had set out to be accomplished from that area.
No complaints from Commission on the end result?
Well, if there are, I would certainly welcome to hear it. Probably not tonight, it's probably better then, rather than open up the field.
No, I just wondered if you had. I mean, the first round of projects were already completed.
Not towards final project completion.
Okay, that's all I wondered.
I mean, there were some complaints that came through while they were being done, you know, that we had to work through.
Okay.
I want to say to that, that it was very instructional going through all of that, because some of, some of the stuff that Butch Ellison had put in went for another Commissioner's area, because he went ahead and gave him that. And so it was good that I finally went in and asked about that, about why certain things hadn't been done, because things had been moved from one thing to another. And so that was, other than that, that's it. You know, no complaint about it, other than just not a paper trail.
All right, I'll move on. And the rest of the CNIP, so the 2013, 14 CNIP process, now we move into what's for 2015. Initial meeting should have been held with each of the Commissioners for those opening discussions about working on what projects we'll be putting in place next year.
Do you have, do you have a status report?
Do you have a status report on where the new projects are at? We met a number of months ago. You mean the proposed ones that Commissioners are looking at?
Yeah.
I don't have it right now. It is one we're working on from the staff as we went through to get with everybody, and then we'll come back in and start doing second and third rounds with the Commissioners to.
Will that happen?
And I don't know what your specific ones are, because some of them are, again, bigger in nature, some are smaller, and then we have to go through and give some price point to each thing to see how many things can be done in each district.
We will hear something before the end of the year.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, will any of that information be available for us to contemplate during our November 1st meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.[1485.00][1485.00](Laughter).
That's very good, Mike. I didn't know you'd be ready that quick. Customer service, several points under this. This is developing a culture of customer service for external customers, and I think you each recall as you see these, these top points, the number and the letter are the goals you've given to me. So within this, we have the police departments hold community meetings. They've held a series of community meetings, and they've always done well here, but they've held more recently. Broadcasting of UGTV, we've expanded that through this year, and adding to it the live broadcast multiple times a week in the just the last month or so that we've been able to start moving on that, as well as getting things posted on the YouTube channel. We're getting ready to launch our newly designed website. Quite excited about that. Staff's done a great job working on that with the graphics and such that'll be in place. Some of the dropdowns, that'll be ready to move out into the weekend is our launch period for this year, that this will happen. Our staff was able to do this in-house, which I would say saved as well over $100,000. Initiation of text messaging appointment system was done to reduce citizen wait time in motor vehicle. We still have work to do on that as far as getting people to be able to enroll online, but that's one area working on. Also, within the last two weeks, I've advanced provisional employee hiring in motor vehicle. Reported this to standing committee on Monday, but not to the whole group about, so we reduce the vacant positions. We've had a number of people leave. It's my intent to staff this area up at least to or over what we have authorized in our budget. If I get to that point, then I'll be dealing with the financial concern at this point, but right now we've depleted down what our authorized strength is, and we, and having people, bodies at the desk to handle service when they come in is a key thing to really just maintaining service.
I will say, this quick action on motor vehicle is much needed. I've been getting a ton of calls. I think all of us have. It's been a, it's been a perfect storm of people leaving, and it's been a meltdown. And I think I've had a number of calls. I had someone that just waited seven hours yesterday that called me. And so, Mr. Bach, I want to commend you on the swift action to get people in there, and so this kind of storm won't happen again. But it's a high priority of ours, and I appreciate your working on it.
I will note, Al, if I could add to that, I'd really like to see some more prescriptive goals, like 95% of people using that service get waited on and out the door within one hour, or whatever a reasonable measure is, so that we can really monitor the performance of that. Mostly, the complaints I'm getting is strictly about how long it takes. So if 50% get served within 30 minutes, or whatever the sensible goal might be, so that we can actually track that, and maybe it would give us a little bit of a clue earlier when we're starting to have trouble. Thank you.
I will note too, and this was a note by Commissioner Walters in our standing committee about, asking us about looking at our service operations. That is one thing we're evaluating too, moving it or looking at it, so it moves outside of the normal eight to five. It's something we had done years ago. Interestingly enough, when we did it, and of course, this was before we were in the situation we are now, and the state had changed the system on us. We had very low numbers of people come before 8:00 or after, after 5:00. So we found that we were keeping the doors open for maybe one person or somebody that might show up during that timeframe, so it was a little cost prohibitive, though I will, I believe today the nature of things has changed, obviously with what's going on with our wait times.
Do we, I've, within the last year, gone through the.
Can you please speak directly into the microphone?
He's a microphone police.
What is, 1949 microphone?[1764.03][1764.03](Laughter). I have gone through this in the last year, and so I'm not in a position to make any sweeping generalizations, but we don't seem to have the same problem at the courthouse that we do in terms of time. I was in and out of there, and there were maybe 25 other people, probably less than an hour. Are we drawing more people to the annex than we are to the downtown courthouse in terms
terms of numbers or is it a disparity of employees available? Or am I wrong? Is it just as bad from day to day at the, at the courthouse?
I get complaints from both, but really bad out west. And to where the point where, and I've gotten calls just yesterday about it because the guy brought the wrong paperwork, which isn't our fault. But I, I get complaints about both and, and in fact, some of them had moved here from Johnson County where they do this text stuff before and are quite used to it and really think it works and I hope it does. But some of the complaints too were maybe we could open early instead of late so people could do it before they go to work. And like when I waited downstairs, it, it probably took me an hour and a half for my work truck, but, and I got here at eight o'clock. But, you know, those ladies worked their tails off and it was apparent there wasn't enough, you know, and you had to ask a lot of questions, you know, there were some language barrier issues and stuff like that they were working through, you know, and I think adding more people's going to help, but I think we should explore, maybe open that particular apartment, just maybe half of them at seven because that's what people are getting mad about, I'm late getting to work.
I, I will say, we're looking at those expanded hours and we'll, we'll come back and tell you about what we're going to do because there's a lot of different issues that come into play. It's kind of like, once you open the doors, you got everybody in. So, I don't, but we'll look at it whether you could do a partial or you just have to have everybody there and then you look at changing what days and maybe there's a day or an afternoon we're not open during the middle of the week so that it forges the ability to be open during other times.
My experience just this week was downtown here at the courthouse is that, yeah, it's every bit as bad. I didn't have to stand in line because I wasn't doing that, I was taking care of other things, but it was moving very slowly and my heart went out to them and there was plenty of people down the hallway.
Yeah, there's a lot of activity downtown.
Can I just make a brief comment? The ma, the major issue is title approval and that, that's a more extensive thing in terms of paperwork as opposed to just motor vehicle registration renewal. I had a message today from the courthouse at 9:13. We already have a 10-hour wait, 68 people in line at the annex, five-hour wait, 54 people and, and these are for title approvals. And so, that's when, when those situations arise and they're able to get on the queue and come back within, within those time periods or, or when they're texted. Right now, anybody who comes to either location for renewal and they're in the door by five o'clock, staff will stay late to do it. And so, yesterday, for example, at the annex, staff was there till six o'clock. So, and, and those individuals that work till six o'clock, they're not getting paid overtime, they're only receiving comp time. And so, so it's almost a misnomer to say that we're only on an eight-hour day or from eight to five if, if somebody's in the, in the office. Where we close off early is title and the title work and that's because of the, the amount of time it takes to process a title. Thank you.
Okay, the, the last item on this page is one about the development of the high school education program. This is one that the chief of police is working on, one we've heard initiative push from the commission for us to move forward with this and how we can talk to them about interaction with law enforcement. Continuing with customer service, we've advanced the goal of open data with the approval of software in our 2015 budget. Our purchasing department initiated the Let's Talk Forum, which was initiative instituted to get people a better understanding of how to do business with the unified government and the Board of Public Utilities. Our election office opened satellite voting center at 110th and I-70. And we provided the social media next door program out through our livable neighborhood center, a program that really could go into various neighborhood groups to allow neighborhoods to better communicate with one another. Item B under customer service was developing a culture of customer service for internal departments. What we're doing here is we're working with our human resources, is working with Kansas University, the hos, not university, with KU Hospital, which has received high marks for their customer satisfaction program. We reached out to them and talked to them about what they could do to help us with training or developing a program. We're currently working with them so we can bring that program back into our own and they've offered to even use some of their trainers, I believe, a little bit in the assistance of what, how they'll work with us. The other area is, under the performance review process that has been implemented for non-union employees, a customer service goal was put in place and identified for each employee that has a performance review done for them. Innovation. This area is establish a strategy to make all unified government data more accessible to internal and external customers. Mentioned this a little bit on the other one, but that was part of the software that we've put in this year's budget, or in 2015 budget to allow us to purchase some software that we'll need to hook on to our systems that puts information, makes information available. We're researching a new agenda management system to improve the management and transmitting of information to commissioners and to the public. And in the area of delinquent tax collection in the land bank, the public relations continue to explore anyway ways to deal with tax delinquent and abandoned properties and work with the committee that there may be some different, different opportunities for us to work with here. Item B under innovation was establishing strategies to review information technology systems. We're currently developing a five-year technology plan to identify short and long-term issues with the input of all our internal customers throughout the unified government. And then, we're underway for the purchase of a new computer-assisted dispatch records management system, which is controlled in our public safety. This is a county-wide system. Generally, we think of this as the police department, but it is a county-wide system that we operate for fire departments throughout the county, the sheriff's department, and then they also do dispatching in other areas. Item C under innovation is establish a strategy to enhance interdepartment information sharing and develop new innovative service delivery. This is an area we're still working on, but our technology department is currently deploying SharePoint 2013, which will enhance our information sharing. But we have, I have some other goals or initiatives that I'll share with you later that are moving forward with this area. In terms of economic development, which is goal number five under section one. This relates to strategies and related to industrial, commercial, retail, and housing sector. I would say we currently have an aggressive policy regarding interaction with developers and end users when addressing industrial, commercial, and retail projects. We've recently made some modifications to our low-income housing tax credit program and our tax increment finance policy regarding residential housing. Now, I would say those are not, those are probably more restrictive in nature because we felt like the way those incentives were going out. And I've noted up here that I think this is a good area for potential discussion point for strategic planning, that in working through this, just what we're thinking about we want to do in terms of housing, if we want to go at that from a different approach in our community, and then if we're looking to make modifications to our other policies on economic development. Also, I put up here the feasibility study that's done for the multipurpose event center out along 435. I, I feel like it fits under this goal in the sense that this is really us reaching out into a new area that we have not been before as far as having an event center where we could attract in businesses or functions that today, there's not a market for it at the size. We have the downtown convention center, but we don't have an event center that probably works, I think, at least at the capacity of why we went out for this study. And that proposal is due back in the coming weeks. We should have something back before the commission by the end of the month.
You read my mind, thank you.
Item B under economic development is a strategy for small business support. Earlier, I noted the Let's Talk Initiative that had have been an initiative that was put forth. I would say this goes directly to local small businesses because the information provided in this was how those local small businesses could do business with the unified government and the Board of Public Utilities. We both purchased a lot of items or services and it's, our local businesses need to make sure, we need to make sure they understand how to obtain that work. We're also working with Windout Economic Development Council to find new avenues to advance small business opportunities within our community. Item C under economic development is manages major economic development projects. Think this was directed, I mean, this is pretty specific toward me as a goal and I continue to work with our development team regarding the strategies and negotiations as we continue to bring significant way. I think this targeted toward major, our larger projects in our community, which example like our Fairfax industrial projects when we bring in large users, job creators, the neighborhood Walmart that went into the Argentine area, what's going on with Vacation Village and US Soccer, you know, just to mention a couple of those that we work on. Item D under economic development was to promote economic development in urban areas and many of these are things we're still working on, but I'll note that we have met with KU Med and Hospital to plan for overall development of the Rosedale area to which we're supposed to be, we are in a leadership role to go through and put together a plan for future development in that area. We advanced a streetscape project in conjunction with the renovation of buildings on Minnesota Avenue. We worked with a developer to complete and open the new neighborhood market in the Argentine area, assisting the mayor's office with the planning efforts and study of the new downtown healthy campus. The advancement of a modern new industrial projects in Fairfax will greatly change the overall nature of that development and we're already seeing by having book-in developments on the north and the south into that project come into play that the interest in the other older buildings, you know, there's more talk coming in to how those can move, those buildings are creating changes. And we don't have projects moving yet, but the interest is now coming to see Fairfax come up from a different level. And we're evaluating options on the Turner Woods area, which you've all seen projects come on before, but we have to put ourselves in a better position to advance this development site if we ever want to see it develop as something comes before us.
Where is Turner Woods specifically? I mean, I know it's in Turner.
Turner Woods. Well, actually, it's right off of Turner, before you get to Turner diagonal, when you come off I-70 and you head toward Turner diagonal, if you know where the Board of Public Utilities has their station out there.
Yep.
It's kind of southwest of that side across the-
It's all the vacant ground.
Right.
The ground next to the Moose Lodge.
I know where that is.
Yes.
Straight south of the church.
Got it.
All right, section two, support and commission goals. So, these are commission goals that are set out, which, as this says, these are goals which county administrator provides support to advance. Evaluation will be based on the, well, I won't let you worry about that, but this is the, really, as a staff, we're not moving these essentially as individual items like I went through on the list of others, but there are things here that we're doing in support of these. So, a little bit different format on the report, but first one in here was housing. So, within this area, I think one of the significant things we've done is changes to the community development block grant program and the format of that, which will be coming back before standing committee, which changes the financial support formulas. And I think as we discussed that morning, this morning, that'll be somewhere between the strategic planning, providing some specific goals on how we'll do that, and then moving that forward through the standing committee to let that move forward. Education and workforce development, primarily here, staff supports to the workforce development committee, Windout County Economic Employment Consortium and to the MAMTEC, MAMTEC board. Multimodal transportation, we've developed new transit routes through the community. We constantly review these, see if there's ways to modify and adjust and we develop, and we're working on developing methods for financial support outside of the general fund for transit, which used to receive a lot of money from the federal government, but we've seen that dwindle over the years. So, we need to find ways to see our own system go up and create additional funding. Under the area of social service, we'll be appearing before the standing committee to talk about what all social service programs the unified government administers or provides. And I would say the one in this area that we've probably seen the most actual action from staff probably works in the healthy communities recreation area. Grant funds received to put out healthy messaging in the 12345 Tastic Program, the enrolled Windout, working to get more people enrolled in the federal healthcare programs, and then grants submitted to support healthy communities for Windout River Trails Project, Healthy Living's Kansas, Healthy Communities Grant, and Take Charge Grant. Under the area of environment, we've advanced our water pollution control projects, which all of those have to be very environmentally sensitive at this point. Inflammation of new NPA standards, this goes off into many different areas of operations such as could it be runoff on certain sites and how we mediate different properties when some things are gone into development, I'm sorry, mitigate, not mediate. And water pollution control education campaign program that they launched in September and creating videos and such to get out in the community to show what we're doing in this area. Section three is under the administrative focus areas. First goal listed here is under personnel, for me to establish strategies for employee compensation, healthcare, and benefits. Two key, two ways of working for that, one, and is immediate, starting meeting with the union leaders, discuss strategy to include healthcare into our overall compensation package for employees. So, as the unified government would move forward to contribute more into that, we get all our employees into that, noting that this is something we need to have, that we have on the table now for 2016 so we can find a way that we don't put ourselves in a similar position to what we are today. Also, completing an RFP to select a consultant to can, come in and conduct a salary study, compensation for all unified government employees. And that'll be, that'll be going out this fall. Item B is establish performance evaluation review system. That review system was established for non-union employees and the plan is, we put it, I told the union groups actually during the budget process that we would have this in place for all unions starting in January of 2015. So, we'll have all employees under a performance review system at that time. At this time, that's not tied to compensation. It's really just one that's tied to work performance and how you do your job. I think it does it a lot for employees to get in and get the feedback from their supervisor so there's clear what they expect them to do and the employee can be clear about what they're expected to do and offer their feedback about ways that maybe they could do their job better.
Or maybe you could tell them that they're doing a great job.
Yes. I want to be able to tell all of them that.
Yes.
Item C under personnel reviews is specifically for me reviewing the key positions across the organization, which we do have a lot of vacancies in that area. I've hired a new emergency management director, currently interviewing for parks director, purchasing manager, compliance officer. The chief, chief of police hiring process is underway. Did a national advertisement for this and currently developing a, a review process to go through and assessment center essentially for candidates that are successful, make the cut to move through and evaluate. Appointed many interim directors to maintain and advance operations until director positions are filled. Reorganization plan that I'm putting out, the previous organization consisted of county administrator with a deputy county administrator and three assistants. And I'll note, each of the assistants are at least three out of the four, if you want to count the deputy in that regard, had director duties as well. Moving away from that format to go with the county administrator and three assistant county administrators with more responsibility upon each of the assistants so they're able to carry on more duties on an independent basis. So, while they're not at the deputy director, deputy position, I feel like they will have, be more empowered than the assistants were under the previous, previous form because they each have direct, direct authority to me with the departments they're working under. None of them will be carrying a director responsibility with the department under them so they don't have to get bogged down in many employee issues or department issues that you would have on a day-to-day basis in running a department. The assignment of duties and responsibilities under these of these, currently, everybody's reporting up to Mr. Chriswell, Mr. Connor. As I hire the third assistant county administrator, then I will divide the positions or the areas of responsibility out based on the strengths of the assistants. And as a new one comes in, I assume there'll be a specific areas of strength that all want to be reporting out to them. want to be reporting after that person. This is very key for me, I think, in presenting this, because I'm ready to move forward on this, which will really allow for more strength within our overall operation and in my office. Four key areas within reorganization, two, Department of Innovation and Quality Improvement. I mentioned this earlier, this is a specific department I'm creating, and I'll note in the creation of all these, I'm doing this within the approved strength. As you noted on the previous page, I moved from four positions to three, and I'm shuffling different positions, vacancies within the government of department head positions to allow me to do this without creating new positions. But I can, so you bring in two new areas, you can see up here with that being the innovation, so there's a specific focus on that, where a team can go in, and I spoke to this during the interview as a County Administrator, that's an area that I believe a lot about, that we can go in, work with departments, short-term, get out, and be innovative ideas or be at ways to improve the quality of the product, which they're doing in that area, and then move on from there. Open Data Manager, we approve software that will come in through the budget process, but if we don't have someone that's there to manage this on a day-to-day basis and annually, then we just have software. This really requires work that comes with it, it'll be a lot of work up front, but I think it's one where it'll continue an ongoing basis to see how we can continue to put this information open, available to the public. But even more so, it's available to other departments to understand what's going on within other areas of our government where we're looking at for information. General Services Department is really a consolidation of what today I have several directors that are managing very small areas or offices of operation. I can move them under one director position from a reporting standpoint, so I don't have as many directors in the organization that report to this person, who can have the skillset to help each one of those, and then have direct contact to the Assistant County Administrator. I also want to isolate out delinquent tax. I think we've done a lot of focus on it over the last couple of years, but it's an area where we just continue to see the need to be able to go after the properties, manage what's going on within this area, to get more properties move through delinquent tax or over into land bank operations or into our development areas. So I want to put special focus on this area with that. Next area is in Finance. 2015 Budget, following Commission timetable, a budget was approved, put in place by the Commission in accordance with our timetable. We, our budget was consistent with Commission goal of holding the overall Unified Government mill rate constant. And I will note, and noted during the budget, we did not require as to borrow or transfer funds from enterprise or trust account funds, which I felt like was a major achievement. It's kind of one that's hard to really see and cheer about, but in the end, it's building our budget within the revenues that we were bringing in this year, or next year. Item D develops a five-year budget strategy. We adopted the budget included a five-year capital maintenance improvement plan. We're updating our five-year financial forecast, the Finance Department is working on that, and I'm sure that'll be a topic we'll work on during our strategic planning. Item number three kind of lays out some of the specific challenges in that area as far as capital needs, fund balances, restoring our enterprise and trust funds, and then employee compensation. Item number four, a new quarterly report was completed by our Finance Department, submitted to the Finance Committee, or the, yeah, Standing Committee during the course of the year that tracks our overall revenues and expenditures by fund. Commissioner.
I wish you would have put the employee compensation in capital letters.
Section Four speaks to Professional Relations. Number one, relations with the Mayor and Commission. This had three areas under it, keeps the Mayor and Commission informed of current and future plans of administration, establishes open and efficient channels of communication, and maintains professional rapport with the governing body. Believe areas that I've worked on under this is completed one-on-ones with each Commissioner. I want to continue to do this, at least on an annual basis. I believe I have periodic meetings with all of you to go on, but I don't want to get to the point that it's just something that only happens annually, but I was able to sit down and spend a fair amount of time after coming into position with each of you. Modified what the previous administrator had done on the footnote section to move to my weekly notes, which are really intended to talk about operations, customer service, different innovations, or special events that are going on for the government. My intent here is not always just to provide you with a list of information, but to talk about different things that I think are important or really in operating issues within the government of what we're doing. Also to actively use the Standing Committees to discuss potential projects and operations with the government. And I think that has allowed all of you to engage at the Standing Committee level at a much higher level into what we're doing, so we get that input as we advance things. Utilize the emergency notification system of any events that come up that hit that mark, that it seems like it's something you should know about now, so you're aware of what's going on. And I believe we've been able to keep most of those items out to you when there's something critical going on in the community. Also restructured the duties of the Commission Liaison. Formerly the liaison position, I think, had been weighted down with duties of some other functions, which really were outside of what was going on in the Commission Office. Now the liaison position is assigned specifically to work with the Commissioners to make sure issues, concerns, items that you're working on are addressed in a timely fashion. You receive feedback as to if something is happening or if, if it can't move forward. Also that information is conveyed over to our office, so myself, the other assistants are aware of it, and allows us to work it in a different fashion from there. Items Two, under Professional Relations, was in regard to staff. Clearly communicates throughout the organization the goals and priorities of the governing body, projects positive image and leadership qualities, cultivates positive and productive work culture. I conduct weekly operations meeting with all my senior staff, that's a group of about 25 individuals that come into this room and we meet on Wednesdays. Had Employee Appreciation Week this year, we had not done that for a number of years. This is a great opportunity to get out, speak one-on-one, or in larger group settings with employee groups throughout the organization. Believe I was able to get to about 1,000 of our employees, which was very enlightening, and it was good to have that interaction. Employees' Goals reinforced the importance of customer service. Also, I tied the employee goals to the accomplishment of what the Commission goals were. Also, my style is that of an open-door management policy, and that was one when I went out and did the Employee Appreciation Week, to really underline that with our employee groups. And if they have something, my door's open, my phone's there if they want to call me, talk to me about it. I think many times employees feel maybe somewhat intimidated, or just don't feel like it's anything that would be worth their while to call me if there's an issue or concern in the way something's functioning. I always work with my department heads when I work with an employee that works under them, but I make sure that door's open for them if they want to have direct contact with me.
I just want to say, Doug, that I've gotten a lot of really positive feedback on all of your efforts with the employees, especially the Appreciation Week when you went out and met with people, lots of very positive feedback. Hopefully you won't be so busy, you'll be able to continue that.
Thank you very much, and I, it takes a lot of time, but it's definitely one that's worthwhile.
Yeah.
Item number three was under Public, projects a professional public image, works during the trust and respect of community members, and encourages open dialogue with community members. Here I can really just say in response to this, I believe my personal goal is to listen and to respond to citizens' concerns in a timely fashion, treat all members of the public with respect, respond equitably and appropriately to issues, and also to project a professional image for our organization and community. And I believe at that point, I've gone through all of the issues in my first quarterly report, tried to at least take it for perspective, that it addressed the goals that you have in place, so you can think about those when you're looking back through, and if there's areas that you look at and I need to address them in a different fashion, or if I need to modify the approach we're using, or if you feel like I'm on a different track. I believe there's only the one goal that was laid out there, and I believe that's in regard to the studies, that I believe it's a little aggressive, that I will be able to complete the police study by the end of next year, and I think that's twofold. One is with the other studies going on, they take a lot of work of staff, administrative staff to work on, also with bringing in a new Chief of Police, I feel like I want to have their input before I can really dive into that as much, but I think we'll be pretty heavy working the other two areas as we go through this.
It, this ties in with the overtime, the overtime issue, and it's probably something of minor in terms of the amount, but, and I've been contacted by four employees. I'm sure it was not in, each of them independently, it was probably some concerted action. They've either called me or come up to the office here and met me. Apparently we are accruing a lot of overtime in our building security operation, I'm being told. Guys that signed on that are retirees from police, sheriff, whatever, public safety, hire on to work 20 hours and end up working 60 hours. If they're to be believed, I would just say, we need to take a look at that too, if we're accruing that kind of overtime. And that just ties into what you said up here, it wasn't meant to be any big deal, but I thought of it, and rather than schedule a separate meeting, I'd mention it and ask you to review that. I'm told by these individuals that we are delaying hiring of replacements, and in their mind, it's human resources. I, I don't know that it is human resources, or who's delaying it, or if there is any delay. But I'd like to know an answer to that, because normally those guys are retired, they do sign up for part-time work, and I'm sure while some want all the hours they can get, the others don't want 60 hours a week.
I know it is an area where we have had a lot of overtime, or if you want to call it overtime, just hours, that we're allowed to work people from the 20 up to the 40-hour mark and still keep them within that part-time status. I'd have to take a look at it, I haven't seen anything recently on what our overtime numbers, so I'll take a look at that. I don't believe we're holding any funded positions in building security today.
Okay.
I will say it, like many other departments, it's one where they put in for additional positions every year to add to it. Building security has been a, a growing area for us with every year. I mean, it's just one where we have to provide security at more events, we have to provide more intense security as far as people that come through the doors and just the hours that we're open with our buildings. You know, just as we can, talked about motor vehicle, if we switch the hours, move it around, it doesn't all become just the issue there, then we got to have guards at the door. So I mean, each time we, building security comes into play in more fashions now than we ever thought about, because when somebody does something, holds a special event somewhere, different areas that are in our facility, we're now putting them in play and when we haven't increased their staff.
Are we looking at, or do we provide the mayor with security?
We are looking at that.
Well.
We provide some security on certain venues and operations. I know in analysis with the Police Department, we found the need that we think there should be additional times when he should have security available to him. So it's one of those things I'm evaluating with Chief Hanson at this time.
Well, I certainly agree that we should keep our eyes on him all the time.
You want security or a chaperone? I think those are two different things.
No, in all seriousness, I think there are, there are opportunities where you're required to be potentially along with other people at, at events where you're, could be in harm's way. Perhaps when you're out of town, we should provide some security for your family.
You volunteer.
No, no, well, yeah, I can go with him on other trips, but I just think, we live in a world where.
Yeah, Commissioner, I will note.
I really would like to have, you know, that be considered.
In, in my budget presentation, I didn't spend a lot of time of it, because I don't like to draw a lot of attention to that specific issue, but there was a point about dignitary security. And that is an evaluation, one we looked at in the authorizing number that went forth in the COEs that were issued for the Police Department with the intent that there could be a police officer or such that could be reassigned for duties from that standpoint, so added that into the COEs, keeping in mind that that issue could be coming about. It's not just the evaluation of the mayor, but it's also, there is a lot of intentional type documents that go out on social media today, where the need to monitor activities or what someone might be saying about any of you. We have a number of district court judges, and of course, the Sheriff's Department works on security in the courthouse, but there's also those, you know, items that we need to look at as far as our district court judges. So our overall dignitary security is one that I'll be coming forth with a plan, and we'll discuss a lot of that more in executive session when we put something like that forward.
Well, I actually can think of one or two of my colleagues here that need security more than the mayor.
For their protection, the public's protection?
More, more have to get shot, that is.
Keep the cameras back.
All right, any other, any feedback? One thing I would add, in, under your number six, Environment, under Support Goals, I think the, one of the things that you, that the citizens see a lot, and probably we've all seen, we are actively working on our ADA compliance. We have a consent decree for the Americans with Disabilities Act to provide curb cuts for every sidewalk in the community. It's about a $30 million project, and that is actively going on right now, and I think that impacts and improves our environment, and I think that's an area that we should highlight and let people know what's going on, but it's been a, it's been an ongoing project. So any, the process from here is in two weeks, we will have an evaluation for Mr. Bach. I will be getting that form to you, you've already seen it, and ask each of the Commissioners to think through it. We will then have an executive session where the Commission will meet directly with Mr. Bach and have an opportunity to provide feedback and ask questions. Following that, Mr. Bach will step out, and just the Commission and myself will discuss job performance, and then with that feedback, I will provide Mr. Bach with his annual performance evaluation. So I think that is the structure that we've set up, and the request from the Commission at hiring us, we wanted to do one at the six-month point, and then we will have these quarterly reports on a regular basis, quarterly, as a matter of fact, as the name suggests. And then this time next year, we will come back and do another evaluation. One of the keys that I think this timing is important each year is to do this evaluation in October, or early, late September, early October, but at least prior to our strategic planning. Because our strategic planning is what sets out the goals that we want the Administrator to accomplish. And so after we get done, I think there's two parts to this evaluation. One is, how is Mr. Bach doing in fulfilling the obligations? The other is, are the goals that we have set forth the goals that we want him to work on for the next year? And so coming out of the evaluation, going directly into strategic plan, will give us a good framework for our goals, and so I think this will work well together. One of the things I'm going to ask us to think about and talk about are the secondary goals that we have set forth. Do we want to retain those? Do we want to have fewer goals? Right now we have nine Commission goals, and to talk about how we move those forwards. We'll talk about that during, during the strategic planning. But I think we have the tools and the format now for a consistent, clear evaluation, and the suggestions like Mr. Walters had tonight in terms of specific things you'd like to see, I think that feedback in the evaluation is going to be very helpful for future quarterly reports, as well as for next year's annual evaluation. So this is a work in progress, and Mr. Bach, I know a lot of work went into this, and so I appreciate the report tonight. Any other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this was a, a good first quarterly report in that it was a good primary reminder for me about how much has been done already, and setting out a script for what remains to be done and how we're going to attack that, even though as the mayor said, that might change somewhat with our strategic plans. One of the things, going back to the discussion about motor vehicles, I recall, and I don't recall if it was in, I think it was in a Board of Commission setting, where there was discussion about actually. was discussion about actually adding, do I want to say a tax or a fee for persons who actually come in? So, as we go to restaff people who have left, also approaching it from stemming the flow of people who would have to come in and do transactions. Where are we on that? Did that go anywhere?
What we did was, we, we currently have a, an annex fee. If someone goes to the annex and conducts business, they're charged $3 for that fee. What I recommended and what was approved in the budget was changing and really dropping the annex fee, but putting it on renewals, or, or work that can be done online or mailed in. The intent there was to drive people away from coming in, so it's a $5 fee, it'll be charged downtown or at the annex, wherever you do that business, so our focus of customers coming in can be driven toward the title work, where anytime somebody has to come into our office. The stat that's kind of staggering on that regard is, in the state of Kansas, I believe the number, and Lou, if I'm close, you don't have to correct me, but I think it's around 30% in the other counties, of the renewals are done in person. In Windot County, we do 80% of them in person. So, for some reason, the culture of our population is to really have a lot of people come in and do it in person, and that takes more people at all phases of the game, when you have that much higher percentage come in and want it conducted. So, if they choose to do so, there'll be a fee, so it's, it's really a fee we hope not to collect as much on. We didn't build any additional revenue in for it, because we hope it somewhat is a deterrent, so somebody will say, well, I'm just going to go ahead and mail that, or I'll do it online, you know. Obviously, it's not there for work they have to come in, and like title work as such, to come in.
So, I should see that on my bill, that extra, when I get my notice to change, or to renew.
No, you won't see it, it would only come if you came downtown. If you, or you, if you came in in person and do it, so if you got your renewal form, that's a good point. We haven't thought through the logistics of it, we should find a way to put that on that form, Lou, that says, here's your price, if you come into the, if you go in and do it in person, you'll be charged a $5 service fee.
And that's why I was asking, because I think mine's coming up, and, and someone in that position should know that there's going to be an additional fee, so they can exercise that option.
Yeah, it's a great, great thought, hadn't thought ahead that far with it, that we get that out there in advance, that way it's not a surprise to somebody when they walk through the door, they'll see it in advance.
The other thing I'd like to say, I'd like to commend both the mayor and the administrator for the rapidity with which they've acted on certain things that I brought to their attention, and you see it here, for instance, the presentation, I think it was the last week in August with the post Ferguson situation, and moving forward with getting our kids in the schools educated about how to respond to, when they encounter our policemen, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a few minutes, we have about 45 minutes before our seven o'clock start time, so we will start promptly at seven o'clock. I will remind everyone, this is a big week in Kansas City. We had the Chiefs win on Monday, the Royals win on Tuesday, Sporting Kansas City recognized at the White House on Wednesday, and a commission meeting tonight. And the first pitch for the Royals is 8:07, and I intend for us to be home in time for the first pitch, so. Yeah. So, anyway, we have a short agenda tonight, so I look forward to seeing you downstairs. Forty-five minute break. We are adjourned.
Silver City Day, that was on the list of incredible...
Silver City Day this week?